Okay, can anyone hear me?
Yep.
Yes, I can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you.
So, Peter, can you?
Yeah, I can hear you guys.
All right. So, thanks for attending this special session to render an interpretation on our code. I'm gonna read the section and question.
Hold on, Mike, you wanna, let's officially call us to order and do a roll call?
I can read the section if you want.
Okay, that'd be great. We'll get there in one second. All right, Mary, you wanna kick off?
Sure, so officially call us to order on this special session today, May 3rd at noon, and I'll hand it over to you, Mike, to do a roll call real quick.
Counselor Petrie?
Here.
Counselor Thompson?
Here.
Counselor Moore?
Here.
Counselor Manalas?
Here.
Counselor Acholi?
Here.
And Counselor Paulson couldn't make it today. Mayor Fender?
Here.
Go for it, Mary.
All right, perfect. Thank you guys so much. So, today, we, this is, we only have kind of one issue before us that we need to, to discuss and consider, and that is the legal interpretation of our city code 2.16.100. As most of you know, this has to do with a resident's request to appeal the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and this discussion is about whether there is, in fact, that protocol within our code and kind of all of that. So, Mike, I'll hand it over to you to read the code and then to get us started on the discussion.
Okay, Peter, do you wanna read it off?
The code section is 2.16.100. It's titled "Appeal to City Council." Says, "An action or ruling of the commission authorized by this chapter may be appealed to the city council within 15 days after the commission has rendered its decision by filing written notice of appeal with the city manager. At the time the notice of appeal is filed, the appellant shall pay an appeal fee and the amount provided in the schedule of rates established by the resolution of the city council. If no appeal is taken within the 15-day period, the decision of the commission shall be final. If an appeal is filed, the city council shall receive a report and recommendation from the commission. Shall hold a public hearing on the appeal. Notice of the time, place, and purpose of the public hearing shall be given by mailing a copy of the notice to the applicant and all other individuals who appeared in person or wrote letters to the commission at the addresses such individuals provided to the commission at the commission's hearing, and posting a copy of the notice of public hearing shall occur not less than 10 days prior to the date of the hearing." So, the circumstance that we found ourselves was that we had a gentleman, Mr. Gary Mitchell, who attended the Planning Commission, was aware of their recommendation regarding the transportation system plan, and informed us that he wanted to appeal that recommendation to the city council under this code section. So, I took a look at this section. Mike took a look at this section. I did not believe this section was applicable for a couple of reasons. One, what the Planning Commission did was make a recommendation, which I interpreted it to be different than a decision. If you look at the paragraph, it says, "If no appeal is taken within the 15-day period, the decision of the commission shall be final." In this case, there are applications that can be decided by the Planning Commission, and that can be the final authority. It seemed to me that those were the type of decisions that would be going in front of the city council. So, I think there's probably multiple steps to the interpretation. The first one would be, is a recommendation a decision? If a recommendation is a decision, then, you know, there's a second interpretation that would need to happen. If a recommendation is not a decision, then that would kind of be the end of it. If the city council were to decide that a recommendation is a decision, then the question becomes, if a decision automatically goes to the city council for review and a second decision, which for a legislative land use decision, like the Transportation System Plan or Comprehensive Plan Amendments, that has to happen, and then those decisions do have to go to GLCD staff for review. So, if something already is automatically going to the city commission, then does it make sense that there would be a separate appeal process, or would somebody simply participate at the hearing that's already going to occur in front of the city commission? If the city council, if you were to interpret it to say, "There should be a separate appeal path, even though this is already going to you for review," at that point, I would ask that you direct staff to come up with a fee schedule. My interpretation of this was that a recommendation is not a decision. A decision is something that has the ability to be a binding on the parties, and also that if something is automatically going to the city council for a hearing, and the ability, the public has the ability to participate in that, regardless of whether they participated in the Planning Commission meeting, which is what will happen with the Transportation System Plan, then it didn't seem like it made sense to me to have a separate, parallel appeal process where someone would be paying a fee to get the council to review a decision that council's already going to review. So, that was kind of my interpretation, which is, a recommendation is not a decision, but even if it was a decision, because it's already automatically going to the city council for review, it would just be a duplication to have a separate, parallel path. The reason it's important to get council interpretation is that staff is given a little bit of deference in how we interpret the code, but the city council is given a vast amount of deference in how you interpret your code by any reviewing body in the future, be it GLCD, staff, or LCDC board, or the Luba Board. And so, that's why I said to Mr. Mitchell that, I, to me, having a separate appeal doesn't, wouldn't make a lot of sense, but I'm not entitled to a ton of deference in my interpretation, and so, we'll get the city council to weigh in on this. And based on what you decide today, we'll either do nothing, or if you find that a recommendation is a decision and that there would be an appeal outside of this appeal, we would have to, you know, craft what that process looked like, as well as kind of a fee schedule for adoption. So, that's what I've got.
Thank you. I, I don't see how it would make sense for us to be able to appeal some, we would essentially be appealing something coming to us. Like, it doesn't, it doesn't kind of work out that way, right? It makes it not, it's not the process. So, I, and I don't know what reason we would have even grant an appeal of the information coming to us for review. I, like, it's a step in a process, and I don't think you can appeal a step in a process that's already been established, essentially.
I have to agree. I will, I believe that Mr. Mitchell is correct in the sense that the, I think the code is confusing, and I don't think that, at the time the code was written, that it was contemplated that this process, which has come later in time, was fully, you know, contemplated at the time the code was written. So, I think we have an antiquated code, but regardless, the way that I kind of look at this as well is, okay, even if we accept the code is a little bit confusing and, you know, is maybe outdated and needs to be refreshed, is there harm from, from that? To me, this is a problem without harm because Mr. Mitchell has the ability, just like any other resident, to make any statement they, he, or they so choose to the commission, but then the next step is, they can do so as well at the, at the, in front of the city council. And so, already that we have built-in safeguards for anyone that feels like, you know, maybe they disagree with the Planning Commission or so forth, that they can then have another bite at the apple by coming in front of the council. And so, for me, I will say that I do not believe that a recommendation by the Planning Commission is, in fact, a decision. I think I agree with Peter's analysis that what, what seems to have been the, the intent is decisions that end at the Planning Commission, right? It seems fair that if the body is going to make a binding decision, that individuals should have an ability to go somewhere to appeal that decision, and that makes sense. We can all, I think we all kind of agree with that. But here, you know, and really, an appeal doesn't need, you know, really, what, what, I'm not really sure what Mr. Mitchell's request is. Is he requesting that they reconsider their decision, or is there something specific? But if it's just to reconsider the decision, then, then it's not a binding decision to, you know. So, for me, I would just say, I don't believe that, I think the code, I think we highlight this section in the code, and that when we go into review of our code and updating, you know, updating our code over the next year, I think this one should rise up on the list and make sure that we, that we bring all of our land use language up to date and ensure that it's kind of clear. But even with that being said, even if we had a clear process and we, this was under, I don't believe that the interpretation would favor an appeal for a recommendation. So, that's, that's kind of my two cents. Anyone else have thoughts or comments?
Yeah, Mayor Fender, I agree. I think, you know, it's a recommendation. I think that's even what the motion from the Planning Commission said, was the recommendation for the TSP, for Kingston Paris to go through, you know, for, for council consideration. So, I don't think that it can be appealed since it was only a recommendation.
This is Counselor Thompson. I agree with all of you. I don't think that appealing a recommendation is the proper way to handle it.
Yeah, I would agree with all of you as well. I mean, having been on the Planning Commission for several years, it's clear what items that come before Planning Commission are a decision that is made by them and things that are, in fact, just recommendations to council. So, it's, it's a standing procedure. It's nothing, we haven't changed anything. This has been ongoing for, for, for many, all these years. So, no, this is, this is a recommendation, not a decision, as all of you have said, so.
And I think one more, one more, just to, to, I think, also think about it, too. I mean, which, it sounds like a lot of work, kind of in agreement, but, you know, like, when staff recommends, when staff presents, you know, anything to council where we then take the recommendation of staff, right, they can't unilaterally, unilaterally go and make that decision, right? They recommend, they analyze, recommend, right? Or like, the grants, for example, right? We had staff recommendation on who to allocate the grants to under the, our ARPA grant funds. Those funds can't just be dispersed, even though they make a recommendation to do so. And so, I think, I think it's very, when you start breaking it down in that sense, it's very clear that the recommendation is not, is not an action. It is simply to inform the council through, right, a way of checks and balances and saying, okay, this is our analysis. This is what we came up with, and this is what we're recommending. And then the council can either agree with it or, or dismiss it. So, anyway, smart. Any, any difference of opinion there? Or any thoughts that you wanna share, or?
I, sorry.
I agree with, sorry. I agree with everyone's, you know, in particular, I agree, yeah.
Yeah, cool. Thank you. Kate, Counsel Kate, Counsel Moore.
So, I just, I wanna highlight this again. This is what I think Peter said, but I'm looking at the municipal code, and what we have here is in 216070, the powers and duties of the Planning Commission, and there are two distinct things that the Planning Commission can do, and this is what Counselor Petrie was referring to. The first one is approving and disproving applications, and then it goes on to say what can be done. Approving and disproving is certainly a decision. That is something that can then be appealed. The second item that, or powers and duties of the commission are to make recommendations and suggestions to the council. So, then, when we go down and read this code in question, it says, "An action or ruling of the commission authorized by this chapter." Well, I interpret it to say, the action or ruling that is authorized by this chapter is actually what's under A, approving and disproving applications. So, anybody listening, I just, I wanna really point out that I think that's referring to 216070A.
Right. Yep, I would, I agree with your analysis.
I think that's something that we need to make. Sorry.
Yeah, I, I think we, I think that this gives us the opportunity to spotlight something that needs to be cleaned up, because we have some ambiguity. In my mind, it, you know, I obviously agree with all of your analysis, and it kind of mirrors my own, but, you know, having a, having a separate, parallel path to something that already happened is, would just be a, in my mind, an inefficient use of council time as well as staff time, but I agree that this, this code needs to be cleaned up to specify that it's, the, the final, it's something is a final decision of the Planning Commission, that that's what could be appealed to the city council for review, just so that a member of the public reading this wouldn't be confused, and, and it would just be, you know, objectively apparent to them what's supposed to work.
Yeah, so I think, Peter, we looked at this and we said, just, I'm just thinking about some of the code work that we're working on right now, but we could simply add, "An action or ruling of the commission authorized under 2.16.070 subsection A."
Yeah, that would, that would clarify, that would really clarify it.
And then boom, we're done, and the rest is fine, that's right. And I think that's probably the intent here, like Counselor Moore was saying, just, it's just never been addressed or looked at. We've never had a situation such as this arise where someone brought up a mis, misnumber in our code, you know?
Yeah, agreed. All right, so with that, I think we, Mike, do you wanna motion on this? And then, let's, let's be very clear and deliberate about what the motion is going to say. And I think almost, I think exactly the way that you just, my, my suggestion, and I guess Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think really what we're saying is that we've analyzed the code. We think that only the decisions under sub A there are appealable, and therefore, a recommendation is not... Yeah, so, I think we do that way.
And so, what we could simply say is that the type of decision that would, could be appealed, you interpret the code, you mean the type of decision that could be appealed is a decision under A only.
Yeah.
And then that would be sufficient for us to, you know, explain this in the, in the future, that a recommendation that already goes to council isn't appealable, but a final decision under A is.
Perfect. So, I hear Counselor Moore is gonna move it, 'cause she, she's good with. But we'll wait, sorry, Mike, I cut you off.
I was just gonna say, are we certain that? Yeah, nevermind, 'cause just B starts out with recommend or make suggestions to the council. Okay, yeah, I think we're good.
Yeah.
Because essentially, they're just making a recommendation or a suggestion under B.
They're making under sub B.
Right, and that's a core function of the Planning Commission, is that sometimes folks get deep in the weeds and they can do, make those recommendations, and, you know, something legislative, then the city council can take it up or not, and can follow that recommendation or not. And that's very different than like a quasi-judicial land use proceeding, where we're on a 120-day clock and where it's a very structured appeal process. And I think that, that's what was contemplated under the code, was this quasi-judicial, but I agree with everybody that the simplest way to interpret it is to simply say, it applies to the decisions, the actions identified in sub A, and not the ones identified in sub B.
'Cause really, any, I mean, really, let, let, I mean, I know that the present, the present concern, right, is the TSP, but the reality is, is that the Planning Commission can make several other types of recommendations to the city council, and those also, in my opinion, are still not appealable and should only be considered under sub B anyway. And so, I think, I think this makes the most sense to do it this way, because we don't wanna hamstring ourselves and say, you know, only within land use, the purviews of land use, right, decisions, or, you know, land use considerations, recommendations, and decisions, right? We wanna kind of broadly say, okay, that, you know, the definitive actions under A, fine, are appealable. Definitive, you know, recommendations under B are not. So.
Right. Because like, what, if they, if Planning Commission meets and they're like, you know, we think it should be a priority to flesh out, like, our code language on needed housing.
Right.
I mean, if that's a recommendation to you, and then you, as a council, would decide whether that should be one of your goals or not, and you're going to make a decision about whether it's the goal or not, why, at the meeting where you hear their recommendations, why would that be appealable? Because people then, either during the item or during public content, during the public comment could say, you know, we disagree, that's important, but we think that priorities should be X, Y, and Z. And then you, as a council, could say, well, yeah, maybe all four should be priorities, or maybe these are the two most important, or we're doing this order. I mean, that's very different than a decision that could impact whether somebody can get a variance from, you know, the, the setback or something like that on their property.
Their decision to recommend has no effect on anything until we act on it.
Right.
Right? Like, we, we could, it recommended it, we, we could just not put it on the agenda for months and months. So, it's like, there's nothing that has, there's no effect until,
right?
Yeah, all right. So, motion time.
All right.
Well, before we do that, Peter, do we need to give any opportunity for public comment?
If, if, if council wants to, if council wants to hear public comment, that certainly, you can. I mean, really, all we need is from council is consensus, and what I needed, if someone's going to appeal, do an appeal to Luba, which is possible, is that they have raised this. They've said we made a mistake because they should have a separate appeal. In the past, I've had the city council make the interpretation, and in the past, Luba has given vast deference to that interpretation. I had a council once say what residential meant, and then the people said it wasn't residential, and Luba said, well, the city council said it was. So, I, I don't, I think it's great if you guys make a motion, and I can point to that, but the most important thing would be to, if someone appeals and they raise this, is that, you know, I would say, on May 3rd, 2023, staff ask the council for an interpretation regarding this section to make sure that, that their interpretation, interpretation of the code was, that, that our interpretation of the code was consistent with their understanding. They determined that it was. They determined that this section did not apply to a recommendation, and then, you know, pull out some quotes. And then, and then really, my hope would be, because we now have this, that someone wouldn't appeal based on these grounds. So, it's, it's really, it's just, I like to dot every I and cross every T, and, you know, an ounce of, sometimes an ounce of prevention can prevent a pound of pain. So, if you guys wanna do, if you guys wanna hear public testimony, you certainly can. And if, if you wanna do, if you wanna vote on that interpretation, you can. I think we have, we probably have all we need.
So, personally, I'd prefer a motion, just so I add it on the record.
I, I would prefer a motion as well. And I guess, I, you know, for, I, in my opinion, while, you know, I, I never wanna stifle public participation. However, here, really, this is a question about how we, as a board, interpret this language, and I, I don't think that public comment is either going to help or hinder that in any way, and so therefore, I, I personally don't think we need to open it up for public comment, because if, if there's individuals that disagree with us, then we are not the right, you know, they need to take whatever steps they feel necessary anyway, but I don't think that there's going to be any point, right? We certainly know Mr. Mitchell's standpoint. We know, you know, I don't, I don't think there's an interest that isn't being provided to us by not having public comment on this issue. So, really, this is about how we, as a board, interpret the language, and therefore, I, I think any public comment is moot on, on this point, is my opinion. But if anyone has strong feelings on, outside of that, then let us, let us know now, or let me know now.
Yeah, so just to summarize, then, the general consensus was that 2.16.100 only applies to actionable decisions covered under 2.16.070 subsection A.
Correct. That is the consensus, and I believe that's what Counselor Moore's motion is gonna be.
Yes.
Let's hear it out.
I, this is my tabs with all of the, the code numbers on them, so, could someone state a motion for me that includes those? And, sorry.
I just did.
Okay. One more time, please.
So, the council's interpretation is that 2.16.100, an appeal to the city council, an actual ruling, only applies to section 2.16.070, sub A, actionable decisions by the planning mission.
Okay, I would like to move that that is our interpretation of 2.16.100. Appeals only apply to? Appeals only apply to...
2.16.100, that's correct. Only applied to 2.16.070.
070A, yeah. So the appeals mentioned in 2.16.100 only apply to the actions that are outlined in 2.16.070A.
Okay, actionable decisions or action, so a decision by the law.
Yeah, exactly.
Do you, do you, and the consensus, do we need to, well?
So I'm going to read it off here. Bear with me. So Counselor Moore moves that 2.16.100 only applies to actionable decisions identified under 2.16.070 Subsection A.
Yes, that is correct. Anyone want to second that motion?
I'll second.
Counselor Thompson?
I'll second.
I actually had a couple seconds, that, Counselor Thompson, Counselor Manalas. But I have Counselor Manalas down, is that okay?
Can you guys not hear me?
No, we can hear you.
Yeah, that's fine. I think we just said it at the same time. All good.
Oh, gotcha.
All right, Mayor.
All right, so all those in favor, raise your hand on the screen.
Six, six, zero in favor, and one is out.
All right, motion carries. All right, so then the next... So with that, Mike or Peter, do you need us to make any other interpretations? Or is that clarified for this now?
I think that clarified the section code that was a little confusing. Peter, did you need anything else from your stand?
No, I, this is, thank you so much, I appreciate it. And, you know, from time to time, we'll probably run into more ambiguous code. And when we do a review, a more comprehensive review, we'll probably bring you a package for interpretation and clarification as we work to get to the clear and objective standards that we need to get to.
Perfect, all right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. And then, Mike, I assume that you will, since Mr. Mitchell seems to be there with you, you will follow up with Mr. Mitchell following this meeting?
Yeah, I will share with him the interpretation and discuss.
Perfect, thank you. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that. Counselor Thompson?
Raise our hands, all in favor. All right, thank, I appreciate everyone coming together on short notice and getting this done today, I'm glad, so, appreciate it. And Mike, Counselor Moore had to, had to leave, so. All right, thanks all, have a good rest of your day, appreciate your time. See you later.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, bye.
Bye.